And we are live, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I will read the introduction to remote meetings at this time for the meeting of July 18th, two thousand twenty-two Board of Selectment meeting. This open meeting of the Northboro Board of Selectment is being conducted remotely with the consistent with the July 16th, two thousand twenty-two Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northboro Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Northboro Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by searching for Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube or clicking the link on the posted agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless public participation is required by law. However, this meeting will feature public comment. I will ask members of the board to acknowledge that they can hear and be heard. Mitch Cohen, I don't think I said that. Let's see, Scott Rogers.
Present.
Julian Hirsch.
Present.
Jason Perro.
Present.
And I don't believe Kristen will be able to join us tonight. She is at a work conference and let me know earlier that she has a conflict at this time right now. So but you never know, she may join us a little bit later. And we have some staff members with us, John Cudair.
Present.
Becca Meekins. Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
I'm trying to do too many things here at the same time.
Thank you very much as always for also being our Zoom Zoom Host Chief Parenti, Finance Director Jason Little. Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
DBW Director Scott Shepherd here.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. I don't think I mentioned you earlier.
Yeah, present.
Going around my Brady Bunch dial here. And I also see Cable Director Kathy Douglas will be joining us for an agenda item later. Why don't we get started? Let's see, looks like the updated agenda does not have the public comments at the very top, the way they generally are now. So we will take public comments at this time. And again, we now allow public comments on any individual agenda item. So if any members of the public has any comments on something that is not our on our agenda, this would be a grand time to let us know. If you do, just go ahead and hit the raise hand button on your Zoom application. We have one person request to talk Doug Stone. I'm going to be bringing you in on audio. Here you go. Doug.
Hi Mitch.
Hi, welcome. What's on your mind?
I had just sent you an email that you responded to earlier today regarding some low hanging wires. Telephone wires at the corner Route 135 and Cedar Hill Road. And I just drove by and took a fresh picture and sent it to you. So you'd mentioned that there was a a chance that somebody in Verizon this evening may know who would be able to correct those wires.
Sure. Later in our agenda, we do have a discussion of a Verizon cable TV license. I can't imagine either our counselor, if anyone from Verizon will be joining us will know about wires, but does anyone from the town side, John, you're.
Yeah, just I did see that email Doug and staff is looking into it. It's not relevant to the to licensure hearing or discussion tonight, but but we will look into that and track down who the who actually owns the wires and and try to get them to clean them up.
Okay, thanks. I just thought it was a good chance to now hook onto your agenda here. So I'm glad he did. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks, Doug. Okay, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak at this time. So we'll move on to our agenda, the meeting minutes of June 27, two thousand twenty-two. Would someone like to make a motion or otherwise provide comment?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the board approved the June 27, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Julian seconded by Scott. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote required. Julian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I'm Mitch Cohen, also vote aye. Vote is unanimous approved. Thank you. Next, we have the continued public hearing on Aspen Aerogels. As the town administrator let us know, there's a requested continuance on this item. So I'll entertain a motion for that, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to continue the public hearing for the application of GNI nine Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the existing above ground storage license for premises located at thirty Forbes Road to the August 15, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the board at seven P M.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Scott and I'll give the second to Jason. Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julian?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Mitch Cohen, I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous. Hearing is continued to August 15. Thank you. I'm sure we'll get the hang of clicking around our agendas. And next we have an meeting with our auditor. John, do you want to start this one off and let me know?
Sure. So I'll have to ask the chief to promote Tom Scanlon from Scanlon Associates, our auditor. But as we typically do each year is we, once we conclude and close out a fiscal year, we have the auditors come in and give a brief presentation regarding the year end close as well as give the board a chance to ask any questions that they may have. Now, this is a somewhat unique year in that this is being done much later than usual. So this is the close of fiscal twenty-one. It's not the close of fiscal twenty-two. We're not, nobody's that fast. We're good, but we're not that good. Just as a reminder, last year, our longtime auditor, Bill Frayer, chose to retire, as many people did during the last couple of years. And so we went out through a RFP to select a new auditing firm. We selected Tom Scanlon Associates. And so it took a little bit for him to get on board. Obviously, as a new auditor, they had to get get going during and it's during the pandemic. So all that was delayed a little bit. But so fiscal twenty-one year end is closed. We provided you with the financial statements. Those statements have been available on the webpage for since they were completed, I believe, back in April. But we haven't been able to get Tom in to meet with the board. What we like to do, and as I typically set up is, you know, on the front end of the budget process, you know, we follow national best practices, GFOR GFOR distinguished budget award during the course of the year, we execute that budget well, finish in the black, healthy free cash. And then we like to bring the auditors in as sort of the last stake in that process in terms of closing out the fiscal year and giving the board a chance to answer any questions. Tom Scanlon is the auditor is a third party independent reports to the board through the contract. And so so it's a chance for a nice third party independent review of our financials. So so that's what Tom Scanlon is here to do tonight. We also have Jason Little, our finance director is with us. So if there are any questions, Jason's available to answer those as well. So that'll hand it back to the chair. And we do have Tom zoomed in here.
How's everybody doing? Welcome to Northboro. If I suddenly go black on you, but there's a, it's like the Wizard of Oz out there coming. So there's power here. But my name's Tom Scanlon. I'm the managing partner, Scanlon Associates. We did this our first year with the audit. It was actually a nice, easy transition. I've been auditing municipalities for the past thirty years. That's probably my easiest transition. Going from an auto firm to our auto firm. So that's a lot said about your previous auditor and also your financial staff that has on in place. I do have a PowerPoint. I was gonna share the screen with you.
Mr. Scanlon, you're free to share. Go ahead.
Actually worked this time. All right. So what's the point of an audit? I was gonna kind of walk you through that. It's kind of what we do. I always assess risk, but really what the point of the audit is, is really to opine on your financial statements. That's the main objective. We do give no opinion on the internal controls. We do have to test your controls, kind of design our audit procedures. But the number one objective is to apply a financial statement. So that's what the bond rating agencies we use. And some byproducts, I guess, keeps your financial team motivated to adhere to your policies and procedures. And there are certain compliance requirements. You're out, you have bonds in the market, you have to do continuing disclosure. They also have an audit filed. So certain compliance requirements you got to meet this year because COVID does a lot of federal money in the system. So a single audit was required. And also the final step is ensures public confidence and also management. Kind of like usually like to go over what our responsibility is as an audit. I know there's a lot of expectation gap between client and auditor. Is it our main responsibility is we're opining on your financial statements. So we're designing our audit procedures based on risk. It's a risk based approach. As I go through your financial statements, kind of show you what we do, what we address. And again, a lot of people associate audit with solely to find fraud. Probably the most overused word out there in the audience right now is a forensic audit. There's certain characteristics that require forensic audit. But and that really objective is to find fraud, the financial part of of an audit is not to find fraud. So there's usually an expectation gap there when these hear the term audit, I automatically associate fraud with it. That's not the case. Fraud risk is is a component of audit risk. But that I just wanted to go over that. So this is our first year in Northboro. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management. It's a very well managed town. You set up policies and procedures you have in place. We had no correcting journal entries other than cap adjustments. And overall, your town's financial reporting is very good. Some of the best I've seen in thirty years. And then and some examples of that is just your report you have with D O R getting your free cash certified. You don't have a lot of D O R adjustments down to your free cash. You can look on there and not a lot of adjustments, just the report. COVID reporting with all the CARES Act and all the money that was flushed into the system, the reports that you produce to the state and how you reported. I can't say enough about it because I definitely have a lot of clients that had a lot of issues. So that's what I mean. Financial reporting is very good outside. People are using your your financial reporting and also internally when a transaction happens in the system, your policies and procedures and your controls that you have in place are accounting for those transactions. For instance, if a taxpayer comes in and pays their real estate bill, it's being put to the system and be accounted for. Your controls are in place. And that's why I would say good controls over key accounts. If your cash reconciliations, your accounts receivable reconciliations, those are your two biggest assets and your control, you're controlling how many controls you have in place are are excellent. And as far as the management goes, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is always has a as a board member, it's always good to hear. So and then so you got you should have three reports. I should have report on the basic financial statements. Single audit, which you've never had a single audit. It's been a number of years. That's with federal money. If you spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's more compliance driven. And the third one is a management letter, which is just since there's no material weaknesses, there's significant deficiencies, just more other matters. And then I was gonna kind of walk you through the financial statements is on page three and four of the financial statements. That is your audit opinion. That is what Moody's, Standard Poor's, whatever bond rate agency you use. And that's what they're looking for. You had a clean opinions, unmodified. It's the best penny you can get. Granting agencies are looking at that. So that's always that should be applied to Jason and his financial reporting. And then municipal finance is very unique. You actually have three sets of financial statements within your financial statements. Or interesting with a company, you just have a balance sheet and a P and L. So it's going to kind of walk you through those on pages sixteen seventeen. These are your N D wide statements. The accounting basis behind it is the full accrual. He uses the whole economic resource base. On there you see capital assets, you know, OPEB liability. Your pension liability and some of the highlights in on page sixteen. As you'll see, your unrestricted net position in the governmental funds. You'll see it's as a bracket around it, which means deficit. You kind of never want to see your unrestricted in that position. This takes into account all your accruals and your two biggest drivers of that being a deficit is you see is your OPEB liability, which is estimated at approximately forty million and your net pension liability of thirty million. Those are the drivers that fifty-nine million in deficit. You're not unique to other municipalities. A couple of things you're doing different, which this is where your financial policies and procedures really come into play is you a trust. You can see your trust balances is four point eight million. I know the last couple of years you took some time off on contributing to your OPEB trust. Which I would encourage to get back to what you're funding, your previous funding to get back to it into your tax rate. Wouldn't take your contributions from a reserve and put in like free cash. So you're taking an unrestricted reserve and putting it into a restricted trust. But really look, get back into starting to fund your OPEB liability again. You know, OPEB is really long term thinking. It's really further down the lines, promises you made to your employees. At some point in time that you're going to pay your health insurance, the whole the whole philosophy behind OPEB is one position can cause multiple health insurance costs. So like you have one active, you know, we'll take that town administrator, you get a one active town administrator and have four retirees, that's five health insurance costs for one position. And that's kind of how you got to treat OPEB. If you're a destination community, which I believe you are, and a lot of people end their careers in Northboro. You know, the way you kind of your OPEB liability goes down, either you contribute to the trust or people expire to create that reduction in health insurance costs. Anyone have any questions on like the OPEB? I know it's always a hot topic. And take that as no.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
And it's just incidental. It's more informational for anyone who's listening. The the estimate of the OPEB liability is sensitive to some of the assumptions behind it in terms of discount rate and that that sort of thing. I'm not a financial person by training, but I wonder if you could just comment on that and how that dovetails into the current economic circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, the liability, it's it's an estimate. It's actuarial base. There's a lot of assumption, health, healthcare trend costs. One of the big drivers is the discount rate. Your discount rate is very sensitive to it. So I used to tell my clients is I don't think your liability is forty million, but it's not zero either. And really, the philosophy you have in long term thinking of at some point, you're going to tap into this trust to start funding your budget. Maybe ten years from now, maybe you know, twenty years from now, at some point, you're going to say, okay, if anyone who retires after twenty thirty-two, I'm going to start paying out the trust once you hit like a benchmark of like ten million. So it's not the forty million that I would that would drive me because there's so many assumptions that go into it and discount rate healthcare trends. And I think you're gonna see a big hit to discount rates. I think your was around five percent, I think you're using. But a lot of these interest rates have taken a dip. So as again, you see Mace. It wouldn't surprise me if your discount rate has to go down your next actuary evaluation, which is going to shoot your liability up. That's why it's more important to get into a trust funding situation, getting on a schedule that you once were. Again, I think a lot of communities did that during COVID. You know, the first thing was, okay, let's take OPEB out of the budget. But again, you had the flexibility to do that, which is your your reserve policies are working. I answer it?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Actually, I have a also a question on OPEB and the trust balance. Looks like our trust balance is roughly speaking about twelve percent of our liability. How does that compare with other comparable towns, if you will?
I think you're a little bit higher than comparable communities. So I think it's kind of I know when OPEB, when it first came out, I know bond ring agencies have kind of put you, okay, did you have a study and did you put it on your financial statements? Yes. Then went a couple of years old. Okay, what are you doing about it? Your event plans, plan design? And then whoever adopted trusts really got extra credit. And I mean, I think you have a healthy trust balance there. It's just a matter of getting back on a funding schedule and then picking a point in time when you're going to start going into it. You know, maybe you're you're marked maybe ten million or twelve million. Where you get enough a return in your investment that you can say, okay, anyone that's retiring after that, we're going to take it out of the trust as a payment set up out of the budget.
John, has the board ever considered a policy? Or I know.
We've, we've, yeah, we discussed this at great length in our in our financial trend monitoring presentations that take place in December. We always track OPEB, report on it, let you know where we are. We had done an analysis through the actuary and came up with the original funding plan of a half a million dollars a year. In order to fund this, we adopted the local option hotel and meals tax, which raised, you know, a considerable amount of that, the majority of that money. So we didn't have to, you know, raise taxes and we had a significant amount of new restaurants and and growth there. So obviously during the OPEB, I'm sorry, during COVID, you know, meals and and rooms tax all but disappeared overnight. So it's a lot. It was a logical reduction to making the operating budget as those return, we need to get back on track. But not so much, it's it's a moving target. And I think frankly, Mitch, it's a it's an annual discussion. And right now, the discussion is in the fiscal twenty twenty-three budget, we're only putting in three hundred thousand into OPEB. So that's a good, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of where we were before. And where we were before, arguably, the goal was to be increasing that by twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars each year and absorbing it as a as a cost of doing business. So I would be frankly happy in fiscal twenty twenty-four, we need to get back to at least to where we were. And then take a snapshot. I think it's the most difficult thing about OPEB is it's the sands are shifting under your feet constantly. You know, at one point in time, you know, we were at ninety-eight million dollars. We made plan design changes. We did all these things. We got our OPEB down below thirty million. And then they decided, well, you know what? One of the assumptions is people are going to live longer. Boom, your your liability jumps back up to forty million. So it is a, it's always a shifting sand. So it's it's hard to have like a hard policy. It's one of those things I think you need to look at every year. And in the context of your overall financial plan and and get on track and stay consistent in terms of your contributions. It's just like, you know, putting money aside for your retirement. You know, even if you can't put away the ideal amount, you know, you put away what you can and increase it when you can. And so we had that discussion every year. You know, I spoke at length this budget cycle about arguing to get this number back up. So right now we're at three hundred thousand. I would anticipate in fiscal twenty twenty-four, we'll be back to five, five fifth, five hundred and fifty thousand. However, here's the irony of it, as as Tom Scanlon already pointed out is the discount rate changes, we may get back to putting a half million in and see our liability still increase. So you know, it's a moving target. The key here is to stay the course, have a trust fund, make real contributions into it. And the the measure that I always focus on when we talk about this in December is what's the funding ratio? In other words, how much we have to your point relative to what our liability is. And you know, we had, we had zero and now we're somewhere north of ten percent. That might fluctuate a little bit. But you, as long as you can see that trend always moving in the right direction. You're making good progress. But it's one of these things where I think every two years when we have the the review is done to have a conversation about are we doing enough and could we and should we be doing more? But I don't think a hard and fast policy, I don't think is the way to go, but an annual discussion about are we hitting reasonable targets? Or should we be doing more? I think is important and we do that every December.
Okay. Stay, if I wasn't there, my question wasn't about annual contributions, which I certainly agree with and I hope that we can get back up to something, something more more beneficial to the the balance. But at what threshold would we start to do as Tom suggested, eventually start to fund some of the retirement benefits out of that? I know we're not.
Honestly, we're honestly, that's a fantasy point in time right now. It's not even worth talking about. We I'd say give it another five to ten years and you might start, the next manager can have that conversation with you. And and if we do our job well, you'll be able to have that conversation, but we're we're not there now, not even close.
Oh, yeah. No, I I know we're.
I thought you were talking about a policy for increasing contributions, which we'll we'll talk about that in December.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Withdrawal, I don't see that happening in the near future.
And I was I was talking long term like.
Yeah, yeah, I just. Sometimes it might be nice to have to have either a policy or something written down. It says our target is to get to twenty-five percent and of whatever the liability happens to be, and then talk about whether we want to start to draw it down, understanding that, you know, none of us on this board may be here at that time.
Fair enough.
Sounds like you all have exit strategies.
At least, at least we, at least we'll be in a position to have that conversation. There'll be many communities who haven't contributed anything that are going to be facing significant portions of their budget going to pay for the ongoing costs of OPEB. That's the position you don't want to be. And I know this stuff isn't isn't really flashy to be talking about, but it's the good management now that's going to allow you to be in a position to do that, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now. So it's important.
I I agree with that statement. That's that's what it is. You're making decisions now for future and you're making sound decisions. Yeah, you're 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 get back to the original question. You are in better shape than most communities when it comes to OPEB and the trust and the way you're addressing it too with plan design, just past, looking back, just you're you're addressing, I think, in the correct way.
Tom, we distracted from your overall presentation. Please continue if you've got more for us.
I I'm leaving the statement after the N D wide statements. I don't have anyone with more questions on these. I I call them statements for accountants. It's like fantasy world. You know, it's got assets, depreciation there, which it really has no. Most people don't relate to them. And then the the next set of financial statements is on pages eighteen and nineteen. I mean, these, these are, I'll call them your real financial statements. They're more modified accruals, which decisions making up here is with your free cash or your budget. So again, uses the current resource method. So you won't see your long term liabilities on there like your OPEB. Your compensate absence, your long term debt. You will see it broken down between general fund and then there's certain criteria that meet the major fund presentations for GAAP financial reporting, which your fire station design and land fund that became major fund because of the liability, the ban that's out there that triggered the reporting requirement. And then the third column is your non-major funds. And I'd always encourage you to go out and we break them down on pages seventy through to seventy-six. And that would is all your grants, revolving funds, capital projects, trusts, anything that's non-general fund. And then you'll see the fund balances are broken down between non-expendable restricted and that's restricted from the outside. Like if you're awarded a grant, that's restricted for that. Any internal restrictions like for an encumbrance or someone's carry and appeal over to the next fiscal year that would fall. Any internal restrictions, uh, like for an encumbrance or someone's carry and appeal over to the next fiscal year, that would fall in the category of assigned. And obviously unassigned, um, is is your free cash and stabilization funds. So they hit the highlights of uh, the fund financials. Is your two main reserves, um, are free cash and stabilization? You will see you if you do have a a sound policy of addressing those two, uh, policy, I believe, is you, your goal is to go eight to ten percent of your budget. You're uh, you're about thirteen percent of your budget before you're voting at town meeting. Um, so you'll see your general stabilization as reported as general fund for gap purposes, um, where under UMS accounting, which is Massachusetts own accounting, that's shown as a trust fund on its own interest, but for um, gap reporting shown as part of the general fund. And I always think it's important to just, so I mean, except been doing this number of years, a lot of people think free cash is a made up number um, by DOR. I think a lot of tricks are played with it, um, but you can see under general fund, unassigned fund balance. I'll take you right back to that number and see that your general stabilization at June thirtieth was about five point one million. The free cash certified by DOR was three point three. Um, and then overlay, which is the the allowance, uh, that's governed by the assessors that you raise in your recap every year for abatements, um, and given is two point two million, and that's right off your balance sheet. Um, and there's certain gap adjustments, six-day receipts and refund taxes payable that get you to here there. Um, and then a DOR adjustment of seventy-six hundred dollars, which you can see it's right off their certification. And that's how you get to the ten point seven million, which is right under unassigned fund balance. I always think that's important. Shawah can tie right back uh, from the numbers. And again, you, these numbers should look all familiar to you, like your free cash being certified. Um, like I said, some of the benchmarks, you know, DOR says your free cash should be five to seven percent. You're at thirteen percent before you vote. And then another benchmark that the bond rating agencies use is they like to see your unassigned fund balance at ten percent, which sounds so you're at sixteen. Um, I'm using a sixty-five million dollar budget when I come up with the sixteen percent. So here's your financial statements. Your your policies that you have in regard that dresses your reserves, um, are working and you they're really, really sound and as out people from outside your organization like myself, uh, DOR, bond rating agencies. This is dictative. I mean, so you you're you're your policies are are working. Um, that's something to be proud of, uh, for your management team and your financial team. And then so when you're setting your budget, you can reflect back to your financial statements. I don't know if any have any questions specifically, uh, in that regard?
Members of the board have any questions? Speak up. I can't see everybody's uh, camera with the presentation on.
Yeah, I can't. And then so I was just gonna, it's all, and then on page uh, twenty-two. This is your budget versus actual. This is really UMS-based. Um, it's a cash basis. I always think it's important to know where your free cash comes from, um, because you're using that to make your decisions, using it to set your budgets and how you use it. The key fact, so this is a way this is uh, is laid out. You'll see the first column is the amounts that were carried forward from the previous year into fiscal year twenty-one. Termin conferences of some as a PO, any unused, uh, to carry forward and their spending. So they're incumbent the money at the end of twenty and carrying over. The next column is your original budget. And then the final budgets after special town meetings, any kind of year-end transfers you do. And then obviously, uh, the next column is uh, the actual basis on your revenues. And you kind of have a nice blend of how your free cash is being generated. You can see uh, your unexpendable appropriations about one point five million. You see that right on um, under the expense line of what to turn back, you need a bigger turn back appropriation is uh, employee benefits and insurance. So I think you're budgeting conservatively, which which is great. And then on your revenue side, you're generating free cash on uh, your revenue side, but you're not utilizing right to the point. Um, so you can see it's a nice blend you have in generating your free cash. Again, free cash, I've always encouraged people, it's 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 kind of non-recurring. So every time you start estimating your local receipts or when you're coming back budget, you're losing the free cash. So I you you're as I read through um, your policy on the way you use it and just over the years, um, you definitely have a good blend, the way you use it. Um, that kind of next slide I have kind of your analysis.
Mitch, if I if I may, can I just interrupt you one second, Tom?
Yeah.
Uh, through the chairman, uh, just, uh, I just want to remind people that, you know, this is closing out fiscal uh, twenty-one. That healthy uh, turn back from appropriations was because we set aside additional uh, fi- uh, free cash reserves specifically to deal with COVID. And we didn't need to use those, uh, another three hundred eighty-eight thousand there. Uh, so we set aside a considerable amount of uh, additional uh, resources in case we needed them for the deal with the pandemic. But then, of course, the CARES Act came through and then ultimately, you know, other funding sources. So that's one of the reasons why we had healthy, such healthy free cash for fiscal close of fiscal twenty twenty-one. So that was a big contributing factor.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, it's 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 and like, I mean, I I have eighty communities I can compare people to, um, and as I said, look in your town that no one can predict what COVID did to towns, how it 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 affected operations, how your budgets is, I it and the towns that kind of made it through and their financial reporting wasn't hurt and they their reserves weren't hurt. It was really the ones that couldn't really pivot and turn on a dime and make decisions. And I think this is reflective of your community, just you know, I have the ability to have, I can compare to other communities and I see a lot of other communities, um, that didn't fare so well through it, um. But you did a really, really good job, um, from management, management down to financial reporting, um, the way you managed COVID and which worked through it and that. Uh, hats off to you. I mean, that's something that should be, you should be proud of. And then I put that slide in here to the last five years, you can see pretty consistent between the the eleven to thirteen percent of free cash and stabilization, which is very healthy. Um, if you're going out into the bond market, they're gonna wanna see this, especially with a five-year trend, um, it's gonna help you with your interest rates, everything. So that's why you have a good set of uh, reserves. Um, tell me any questions regarding to that? Must be a good, that must be doing a good job of explaining it. Or people fall asleep on the two. And just some other uh, kind of like areas in your financial uh, statements that really kind of jump out at you is that it did your financial staff is is does a great job is your property tax collection rate is ninety-eight point seven. What that is, you take your real estate commitment and you divide by your collections. A good sound number is ninety-six, ninety-five, um. You're ninety-eight point seven. That means you're collecting what you're saying you can collect. Um, the tax letters is not taking it thrown right into a tax title, um, and it's isn't taxable. So your your tax title uh, balances, um, principal only six hundred sixty-nine thousand. That's reasonable for a town your size and probably a little below reasonable. You you're you're collecting your tax bills, uh, which is great to see. And then an other uh, characteristic that really jumps out at you is when you look out on pages seventy-seven and eighty, what we have, we put like the detailed list that's maintained, um, by the tax collector's office as it compares to your balance sheet, um, items. And you you have no variances between the detail and that detail is actual detailed names. So if you think about it on your controls, you have a collector's office that collects the taxes on your, um, town accountant who records other transactions. And those two are lining up and you're balancing, um, on a periodic basis and that that is great from my perspective. Um, so what we kind of do is we, when we assess risk on your financial statements, um, procedures we do, we will, we feel like governments number two and biggest assets are your cash and your accounts receivable. Um, we make sure you have controls and we test controls on those regards. So we do a lot of bank statement level testing. Um, so we review your reconciliations at the bank statement level, put emphasis on cutoff. Um, if you're saying you have an outstanding is your outstanding list, checklist, or reconciling item, or we we will go check the detail of that, um, and make sure it's proper on timing. It's been a lot of time in a collector's office. I mean, is that your biggest revenue stream? When you look at your revenues? So we do a lot of detailed testing in there and then when you come in and you're assessing risk and you can print, um, a detailed list and it matches up to um, Jason's ledger balances. I mean, the first thing I think is there must have been a journal entry made, so we're gonna go test additional journal entries and make sure it wasn't a plug number somewhere, um, and it wasn't in your case. So that speaks volumes. Um, you don't have a lot of journal entry correcting entries. So and then when you look at your financial statements, you look at your revenue sources, the biggest risk is someone taking a general fund revenue and sticking it over in a special revenue fund. Um, again, your procedures you have in place, you're identifying anything that's going to a special revenue fund has some kind of restriction to it. You're not taking up property tax collection and sticking a special revenue fund for a rainy day. So your procedures are working. Um, so what we'll do is we'll get a report from the state to say, give me every state receipt that the state uh, gave to the town of North Pole, we'll tie them all in to make sure in their appropriate funds. So that's some of the testing we're doing. We do a lot of analytical, look at your budget versus actual. Look at deficit accounts, um, any anomalies. Um, when we look at your special revenue funds, we look for deficits. So, okay, we're gonna look at that account, see what's going on, because there if it's in deficit, it should be a grant reimbursement, um, and the reverse too. If there's a high surplus, hey, why do we have a surplus? Why are you accumulating this? That's some of the testing we do. I don't know if any questions on the basic financial statements or any specific things from air? Gonna go no on that. And then uh, kind of.
We're all we're all still we're all still awake and intrigued. Please continue.
They're much more exciting when the town is messed up and there's all kinds of problems. I can assure you, these are much more lively, uh.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, you know, your financial statements are actually kind of boring, which is good. It's a good thing. So the single audit, so you were subject to uh, the single lot this year and to spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal awards. Obviously, that was the CARES Act. I think you're gonna be a single lot. I had to guess for the next two years between ARPA finishing up of the CARES Act. This type of audit is strictly compliance driven. And you'll see on there that, um, the single I report, uh, the town did not qualify for a low-risk auditee. That's not what you think it means when you first read it. What it is, if you didn't have a single out in the last two years, you can't be a low-risk auditee. And all that is, is the difference between testing twenty-five percent of federal grants or forty percent. The type of money you have, you're always gonna hit the forty percent mark when you look at it. You know, we the town spent about about one point six in federal awards and the CARES Act was just under a million. So whether you're a low-risk or high-risk auditee, you're you're still gonna pick, um, the CARES Act to test because it's it it's the more of the high-risk, uh, it's a new grant this year. And there was no findings, um, your ability. If you go back and in the environment that we were in, the rules were changing constantly between FEMA and CARES. And your ability to adjust to that, a lot of towns couldn't adjust to that and still produce the reports, um, that they requested. I mean, that that speaks volumes too from, um, I mean, my staff, you made comments about that. Wow, they really pivoted. You could really do that turn, because they they literally changed the rules on you, like things that happened two weeks later, they changed the rules. I mean, I was given advice and then a week later, that advice was wrong. Call town, say, yeah, you can't do that, um, or charge it here. I think there's gonna be a lot of cleanup, um, with with the CARES, um, in FEMA in the end. So I don't have any questions about single lot or just my next slide is just questions in general, so.
Perfect. Uh, questions from the board? And again, yell out because I can't see everybody on the Zoom screen.
Yeah, Tom, can you pull your share screen down?
Yep.
Thanks. There's everybody.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yeah, so thanks, Tom, and, um, you know, credit to Jason and the team for a a clean audit report like that. Uh, on the management letter, um, you outlined, uh, kind of four kind of comments or recommendations. And I don't know if those, it's it's hard for me to know the uh, the significance and then they might be things that, you know, the town says, oh, yeah, we're we're planning to do that. We've rolled that into twenty-two already. Uh, so I don't know if it's it's worthwhile to to look at the the four comments there and if there's any.
Yeah, I mean.
Discussion on.
From my perspective, they're they're very, they're other matters. It's more for operating efficiencies. It's just efficiency than it is, um, classified as something you gotta do about it. It's more conversational purposes, um, so it they're not. I guess, uh, not shouldn't be, it's 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 another matter.
They're they're not actionable in the in that respect or, you know.
Yeah, we can go through, I mean, um, the lease one, that's more just getting your finance same in accordance with uh, GAAP. They pass a new lease rule. I think Jason's very well on top of it, really maintaining a spreadsheet by your leases. And you're not a big lease community anyways. Um, the document management retention. You know, it's more, um, did I don't know if you've been in Jason's office? With the pockets, I mean, it's more the managing your records, um, you know, your financial records, you know, having proper storage. Um, and then the details is more, that's more of an accounting perspective than it is. You don't have a hidden deficit in there. Um, like some communities, it's more coming from our perspective of seen receivable on the books and there's our backup documentation, the flow of information. So it's more GAAP reporting, we'll call it for that. That makes sense.
Any of those, Jason, that you're you're kind of like nodding your head, yeah, I'm on top of it. It's all good.
Oh, yeah, just to the chair, you know, the there is the comment about leases and that's a GASP requirement. And um, I think that's aimed more at communities that probably uh, finance things like vehicle purchases through leases. Um, us here, we finance through traditional means like, uh, short-term, long-term debt. And uh, we pay lower interest rates as a result of that. Uh, usually communities that lease big pieces of property like that are, um, doing that because they're not being audited. They don't have credit ratings and so forth. Um, to us, it's not gonna be a major impact. It's gonna be a major impact to me in terms of work, because I'm gonna have to maintain a spreadsheet of all our leases to basically prove that it's um, gonna be immaterial to our financial statements, because we don't, we really only have operating leases, copiers, and, um, you know, I I believe the school has probably leased some musical instruments for their band program or something, but, um, we really don't have any significant leases, so it's not gonna be a very impactful thing, but it's something that's talked about a lot in the accounting circles is how to comply with this new GASP that's coming out. With regard to the documents, I'm hearing that, uh, some space has been been cleared out in town hall so that we can uh, move some of our records that are that are, um, piling up. We're building a fort in our office out of file boxes filled with bills and so forth. And these are the things that you you know, you years go by and we can throw them out after a successful audit. You know, we go go to the secretary state's office and get permission to throw them away, but we need to keep invoices for the life of contracts. We need to keep things for the life of debt that, so it's not not as easy as just like throwing everything out after we're done with an audit. Um, we we do have to keep a lot of the things within the files that we have. So it's just important that we find space within the building in order to keep or, you know, outside the building, some some way of maintaining all of this paper that, um, someday, maybe we'll get to a a paperless society, but we're we're not there close yet. So um, like I said, um, we're we're working on that and we're probably going to have those. I I can't wait to get these file boxes out of my office, to be honest with you. So um, I'm I'm happy to be working on that one and I'm happy our new facilities director that we've hired, um, has has, you know, they've been paying off with with finding solutions like this. And too, with the details, I think that's a frequent problem that happens in a lot of communities whereby um, there's been bills that have been issued by a department for years and they had, they're not collectible, they're not gonna be collected on, but it's not details aren't carried within the general fund, so they're not reflected in the financial statements. So they they have hidden liabilities there because they've they've been paying their officers out as they've worked, but they're never gonna get paid for the details. So that's a a common problem. Really, to us, it's just more of ma- maintaining a process for making sure that's not gonna happen in the future and, um, you know, and and just having accurate numbers in in general and having having the the information flowing better. And from what I understand, we're researching software options. It's been been a number of years where we've been using a like a QuickBooks-like program for maintaining the, and we we really need a better solution, a more industry-specific solution for for software for tracking those details. So it it's something that's being worked on. So it's something that's being worked on, not in emergency, but like, like Tom said, these are more just operational comments and somewhat boilerplate in that they, they show up in a lot of different towns. I hope that answers that question.
Yeah. And that's great. And I've done this in past years too, right? As I look at that, the suggestions of things we could do to improve above where we're even at now. And so not to, not to like, you know, bring down, bring down the fun, but it's always, you know, good to look ahead at some of these recommendations and and hear that you're, you know, you're implementing most of them there. So thank you very much. That's great.
Other questions from the board? Jason?
Not a question, but I think it's interesting to observe, this is the first year that we're conducting the audit through Tom's company where Bill Frayer has been a long time auditor prior to that too. And it's gratified to see that we're essentially receiving the same kind of reports and the same kind of observations about our municipal and financial management, our financial policies and practices and the expertise diligence and thoroughness of Jason and his team to have this information assembled, everything is tracking out and you know, the, the recommendations that we were just referring to are certainly the most welcome kinds of recommendations we would be wanting to hear. So I'm just very, very pleased at the, at the outcome. I think it's nice to have the kind of second point of reference with the new auditor and and just like to congratulate the team for another excellent year and just a wonderful job of of managing all of this information and being able to put it forward and you know, accurately represent the position of the town. So thank you all.
Julian, did I see your hand raised briefly before?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. So, so Mr. Scanlon. When you, when you talked about the OPEB, I'm sorry, I should have asked at the time. And, and so I, so yearly, we strive to contribute $500,000 towards that OPEB fund. Is it within your purview to suggest to us that that's, that, that's where you, the amount that you would contribute? Would you like to see more or less? But I guess not less, but.
I think that's a good starting point to get back on your original funding schedule. I think it was 550.
Yeah. Julian, if I, if I may chime in here, it's a, we have a separate actuary. It's beyond actually what our auditor does. But we have an actuary firm that we use that analyzes our liability risk there. And what we've done in the past is they've given us several different funding schedules that we can follow that will get us to varying degrees closer to our goal. Unfortunately, as we all know, what we should be putting in is, you know, probably three or four times what we are putting in if we wanted to get to that goal quickly. But what we've had to balance and decide as a, from a policy standpoint is what's a reasonable amount that makes reasonable progress? Knowing that we should, you know, ultimately be trying to increase that number. That's why you hear me hammer it so often during the budget process that I know it's not, you know, glamorous and people would rather spend the money on direct services today than worry about a liability that's going to come 30, 35 years from now. But it's really important that we do that. But we have an actuary that we can track with that does that type of analysis. And that's usually a discussion that we have in, in December.
Okay. And one more quick question. Thanks, John. Under, on page 39, under detailed notes, this is, this was just something that I didn't, well, not that I understood the whole thing, but there was something that jumped out on me and it was about custodial credit risk. Do you know what I'm referring to?
Yep. Yeah. Custodial credit risk is the amounts. It's a note disclosure, the GASP says is important. It's basically your uninsured bank deposits. And it's over the FDIC and TIF amounts. I think FDIC is 250 and DIF is up to I think like three million. So that has to be a disclosure, what your uninsured balances. Now that doesn't mean that it's risk, it just, it's a note disclosure. So it's not like you're in you're, you monitor your banks of who you're invested in. So it's not, a lot of people think that's a bad note when they see uninsured. Yeah, that's, that's, GASP is in the process of changing that note because that was the overall feeling when people read it was like, oh, we have some exposure here. Well, no. Your personal bank accounts are probably over the FDIC limits. So you probably have some uninsured. But you're not in like, you know, the Bank of Tom. You know, you're in the legit, you're, you're, you're monitoring your banks, what you're in. So for you to be exposed to some kind of risk would be we'd all be in trouble if, you know, like you're in like, can't think of banks use, but you're using top quality banks in Massachusetts.
Bank of America.
Yeah.
Tom, through the chair, just could I mention that I'm not really prepared to speak about comment in detail, but is it because we have funds in the Mass Municipal Depository Trust where those cities and towns put money in and it's, it's not collateralized, but it's it's a safe investment environment to put your money that returns a better investment return than, than our usual local banks that we, that we use.
So MMDT is on the next page for investments. I mean, DT is considered investment, not cash. I think she was referring to the 1.1 million that can. So it's, it's only, yeah, I mean, there's no, I get a lot of questions on it. Again, it's a disclosure of what your, your uninsured balance is. But, but you're, you're monitoring your banks and what you're in. Like I said, you're not in the, the Bank of Tom, you know, where you're giving me money to. I can tell you what the banks were and that ends very common. And again, you know, if your bank about 8.6, you're like 1.1 over and don't forget you're getting state receipts at the end of the year. You got your ARPA money wired in on June 30th. So at that point in time, you may have had some exposure for uncollateralized, but it's not. The answer to your question is not an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't have any other questions that weren't already asked. My questions would have been on the management letter that, that Scott already asked about. I'm particularly happy to hear that the boxes are being moved out of your office, Jason. And I, that's, I mean, it's not good record keeping really, because things can happen to boxes that are just around an office and it's not healthy for you either. Those things collect dust and.
We've had other priorities the last couple of years. So.
Yeah, I know, I know. Eventually I'd love, love to see us move towards, towards digital systems if we can, if we can find something.
We're looking into that.
Yeah, great.
If I just may, before we conclude, Mr. Chairman, I just, I do want to publicly thank Jason Little, our finance director. This is him. This, I, you know, this clean audit, this is on Jason and his, on his team. And he does a fantastic job for us. And you know, Jason is a leader in his professional association. The work that he does here is used as examples in other communities and just top shelf. And I can't say enough about about how lucky the town of Northborough is to have him. Second point is these financial statements as the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASP, we love acronyms in this business, but as GASP keeps tweaking and changing these statements, the, the sad thing is it becomes less valuable to practitioners like myself and less valuable to board members such as yourselves. So you really want to listen to what your auditor has to say. You want to look at the management letter. And again, I always say it's not a clean audit. You can operate on this, on this management letter. But I can give you a couple from other towns. You can see what a real management letter can potentially look like. But you should be focusing on the management letter, listening to the auditor. And then the key thing for us is, you know, there's no, no material deficiencies. There's no, there's no findings, you know, and that's key. But the second thing is what you hear throughout the entire presentation, and if you hear every time we talk about budgets is, is that we have good discipline, good policies, good execution. And, and really it allowed us, when COVID hit, it allowed us to pivot and to maintain services, reduce taxes at a time when it was important to the residents and businesses and get through COVID really unscathed. And now we're pivoting back. And this is where the tough thing in that discipline on your part comes back is things like OPEB contributions and and making sure that we're doing, maintaining our reserves and investing back in the capital that we postpone. You know, that's in part your job to make sure that you're supporting, you know, the recommendations of staff to get back and stay on track. And and really, if everybody's doing their jobs, you wind up year after year, we've probably had as long as I've been here, a decade and a half, if not more of, of clean audits, great execution and and, and top shelf financial management. So just again, I can't say enough about Jason. He's one of the best in the business and we're very lucky to have him. So.
Okay. Any other questions from the, Jason, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to comment. Thank you for the nice compliment, John, and I appreciate it. And I can't go without sharing credit with the rest of the financial team. I've got a bunch of hardworking, great people that work in the finance department. Starting with, you know, we have a treasure collectors department that, that, you know, Tom, Tom is mostly talking about like the, the well organized collector's office because that's our biggest stream of revenue is tax revenue. Lisa Trost does a great job and the, the staff in her office are are phenomenal. And we have a great assessor's office. We're not, you know, having unfunded liabilities with, with tax abatements and so forth. Our, our assessors department does a great job valuing property so that if we do have abatements, they're limited in scope to what they are. And then I have to mention that the public works with the utility billing under, under Scott's purview. We tie out every month. We are doing all the same work that we're doing with the treasurer's office. They do a great job as well. So I have to share that credit. I got a lot of hardworking people that make all this happen and happen so smoothly. So thanks. I just wanted to indulge myself with that.
Quite justified. Thank you. I'll add that I learned a number of years ago, a trick that if you get a nice clean audit from one auditing firm for a few years, you find another auditing firm and they'll find stuff. We were forced obviously due to our retirement to, to find another auditing firm after a few clean audits. We got another clean audit. So I think that that tells us a lot. So, so thank you to, to John and Jason and everybody else. Any members of the board have any comments? We do have one, one hand raised in the audience. I want to see if the audience has any brief comments or questions. Okay. Laura Zaitin, I'm bringing you in by voice. You're the first and only person thus far with your hand up.
Laura, go ahead. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, here you're fine.
Okay. It's Laura Zaitin, 17 Franklin Circle. So I've got several points that I wanted to bring up based on the auditor's presentation and report. I'll send it to you as an email, but I figured I'd just pop it in here. So if you have any questions on what I'm about to share, you can let me know. Or feel free to send me an email back. So the first topic I wanted to comment on, it's come up a couple of times, is the boxes of financial documents. As a taxpayer in this town, this is alarming to me. You know, there's any number of disasters, you could have a flood, there could be anything that could happen in town hall that would immediately erase all of those documents. So I think just moving them to another room sort of out of the way is probably not the best approach. And I really strongly suggest that the board look at ways to find a more permanent solution for this because there are really cost effective digital solutions to be able to save that data. The second topic that popped up in the management letter was the police detail billing information. I read in the auditor's report that there wasn't enough detail as far as the billing for police details. So I just wanted to comment to the board that if you look at what happened in Boston, this can really leave a big gap. And it's important that we pay attention to this, just to make sure we've got granularity in how that is happening. So just, you know, to pay a little bit of close attention to that and really get a good process in place. The third topic that came up was really along that same, you know, that same comment is the departmental spending. Right now in the auditor's report, there isn't really a whole lot of, it's not even the auditor's report, it's more the financial statements. There's not a lot of differentiation between the departmental spending and managing those budgets. So I was just thinking that the selectmen could really take a look at the different ways that we can get more transparent around the departmental spending. It is time consuming, but I figure, you know, in the long run, it would make it a lot easier for staff to be able to run reports on expenses, you know, so that we can see what's going on with Bwell and what's going on with EPW budgets and, you know, the senior center, just to make it easier for us to have more transparency around that. The next topic, this has come up a few times. It's around the internal controls and policies and procedures. And this was mentioned several times in the letter to manage it. And this has actually come up by Bill Frayer a lot in the past as well. Basically, just, you know, right now, I think that there's some areas of improvement that we can look at in terms of, you know, interdepartmental spending, how that money is being spent, how those different, you know, just, just to have better control over our, our departments. I did find a letter from Bill Frayer for Southborough that really had some great suggestions. I'll send that link along to you so you can really look at how we may be able to mirror that in Northborough. And then the last comment I've got is in the past financial statements, there was always a category that said, you know, the dollar change in expenses and revenues, but it also had a percentage change. So it really makes it easier as somebody that's just looking through those financial statements to highlight which areas have bigger than normal changes. With the ways that the financial documents were prepared this way, it's really hard to figure out what a significant change is versus just something that's, you know, within the expectations. So I'll send this whole letter along to you, but does anybody have any questions that I can add clarification on?
I had a question. What about the financial statements or percentage?
Well, there was like five topics that I brought up, so I just figured.
The last, the last item, I think, Laura.
Oh yeah. Okay. So if you look at our past financial statements, every line item, it would say like the personnel budget, there was like a 97% change. And then on the different line items, it's a big document, but at the end of everyone, I'll include a link to that.
Well, I thought you were talking about the audit report.
Oh, no, 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 the audit report. Nope. I had just specifically about the financial statements, just to make it easier to really identify the changes.
I got you now.
Yeah. But I'll send it along. If you've got questions, feel free to let me know. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I hope I covered it in a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you for the input, Laura. Pretty much appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Any other members of the audience wish to, to make a comment or have a question about this agenda item before we wrap it up? I do see there is one caller connected by phone. I believe it's nine on the phone. If you want to raise your hand. Going once, going twice. I think we're all set. I don't believe there's any action that we need to take on the audit. Correct, John?
No.
Okay. Tom, thank you very, very much for, for your insight and presentation. And, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Yeah. If you have, if you have any questions throughout the year, like anything, got any areas you want looked at or any questions that pop up. I mean, we feel the audit is like a 365 day a year. It's not just two weeks out of the year, we come there and you can't contact us. So we encourage communication, helps us design our procedures too. So.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Good night. We'll move over to the next agenda item, which is a Verizon license. John, I assume you'd like me to bring in Bill Hewig and Kathy Doggish. Whoops.
Yes.
Magic happening.
All right. I'm so good. I already promoted.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Very good. Bill, good to see you. It's been about two decades. Bill, we don't hear you. I believe you are muted. You're still muted. You're still muted, Bill.
How's that?
Yeah. There we go. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Very good. And Kathy, you can hear us all right? We can hear, I'll assume we, we can hear you if you have anything to say. So John, I understood, you want to give this a quick intro?
Yeah. So in your packet, you have a memo from Bill Hewig, who is our, from Copman and Page Town Council. Reviewing the highlights of the renewal on the Verizon cable license. Just as a precursor, I don't want to steal too much of Bill's thunder here, but you know, when it comes to cable licenses, if you're waiting to comment on, you know, the pricing or the channel options, we have no authority over any of that. The town's authorities really regulating the right of way with wires are. And, and then there's a couple of components which Bill is going to speak to tonight and Kathy is here to comment as well with regard to our PEG access funding. We have a percentage of the general gross annual revenues. And then there's usually a capital contribution for support of our PEG access. The balance of the contract is a pretty standard. Most of it, you know, we wouldn't necessarily need to get into. You know, we wouldn't necessarily need to get into, but but Bill has given you some of the highlights. Uh, but ninety nine percent of time, I've been doing this for twenty five years, the 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 comments that people want to make are about the uh package. Uh, the bundles, the bundling, uh, how they're bundled, the offerings of the channels and the pricing. The town of Northborough on the front end controls none of those things, so that is not in the purview of the board of selectmen, as I'm sure Bill will remind you tonight. We're really regulating the right of way. And then as part of that licensing process, there's a small fee that we can uh add into this licensing. That supports our local PEG access, and that's really kind of the extent of it. Uh, the one other thing I'd mentioned before I turn it over to uh Town Council is um. The most important thing here is Northborough is lucky to have competition. Many communities don't. Uh, it's one of the things that we worked on early on. We had Charter as a cable provider. We tried to get RCN when they were in the business and uh and they ultimately pulled back. We were in negotiations with them and then ultimately we were able to get Verizon to come in and offer this uh and offer this uh service package. And the value to, in my opinion, that the residents of Northborough, the consumers, is having that competition, and that's the value in the license. You know, and uh the component of it supporting our PEG access, whether or not you have one or two providers. You know, you're limited to what you can get for your PEG access, and that's something that we'll discuss. But otherwise, um, it's really not, uh, this is a long license, but. There's very few components actually that we have input on or would require the board to consider. But uh with that, I'll turn it over to uh to Bill to kind of hit those high points for you in terms of where we are in this license renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Koder. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Um, I I would uh. Add to what uh John just said about the Verizon licenses, more so than any other cable company. They have gone to just operating with a uh a a formatted license, a template. Every license for every town is the same except for the names, the dates and the numbers. Uh, apart from that, uh, you you find a great deal of difficulty trying to negotiate any of the non-numbered terms in the license. Other companies, you can negotiate a lot of different things, but Verizon has just gone to this one template that comes from New York. It's the same one they use all over the country, and that's just it. So uh, i- if some of the provisions here look a little boilerplate to you, they are. Um, and that's just the way Verizon does business and and we have to live with it. Um, the license that is before you, I'm happy to say is very generous for Verizon. Uh, Verizon and all the cable companies in the past four or five years have become a lot harder to negotiate money out of. Uh, and that is because their cable revenues are going down, their subscribership is going down. People are unplugging, people are switching to streaming platforms over broadband. And uh, the cable companies are perfectly happy with that because they market broadband too, and they don't have to pay fees. So it's not as though they're fighting it all that much. Uh, the consequence for all of us is, and just about every community in Massachusetts and all over the country, that cable revenues are declining. And as a result, uh, some of the support funding for public access is also expected to decline if it if it hasn't already. And that's the reality we're living with. This license, I'm happy to say, is quite generous for Verizon. Um, in the executive summary that I sent you, I noted that the uh. Uh, we're currently getting from Verizon, the current Verizon license, we are getting four percent gross annual revenues. And we were getting capital in the amount of uh eight hundred eighty five thousand dollars over ten years, but it was in two or three payments upfront. But I like to look at it as an average. So it was about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars a year, average capital support. Uh, the new license that Verizon has given us unusually increases the amount of capital. Um, I'm doing a lot more Verizon licenses now in the last couple of years. And it's very hard to get them to increase any capital or the the uh, or for that matter, the gross annual revenue percentage. So four percent gross annual revenue with an accelerator clause to five, if and when we get that from Charter, and I believe we will. Uh, and the capital is uh, um, twenty three thousand dollars a year average instead of the eighteen five. Over a five-year license term, total of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was originally a hundred thousand and Verizon. Uh, you can negotiate with them a fifteen percent premium on the capital. In exchange for some of the things Verizon has been doing the last few years. Uh, that have not been very acceptable to communities and municipalities. For example, a five-year license instead of a ten-year license. And for example, uh, the right to unilateral termination after three, after uh three years, after thirty months. And with a uh hundred and eighty day notice, in other words, after the thirty six months. When uh cable license lawyers like me and others whom I think you know, Mr. Chair, like Bill Solomon and Bill August. Uh, we're confronted with that. We all said that's, you know, we can't accept that. We don't want that. That's not unilateral termination. It's not something we can live with. Well, uh, Verizon's attitude is take it or leave it. We are ambivalent towards the cable business. If you don't want competition, we'll be happy to pack up and go. Because we're not a cable company, we're a telecommunications company. We could stay in town after we don't have a cable license, but the others can't. So we were in a bit of a bind, but we did manage to negotiate concessions out of Verizon. And one of them is that the capital payments get paid all before that thirty six month termination date if they want to uh elect to do that. And the other, the other one is that we want more money out of you. So. Come, uh, there should say Verizon agreed to a fifteen percent premium on capital. So that's where we get the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from. So I want you to know that although there are concessions in this license that none of us like. Uh, we were at least uh able to negotiate uh some benefit in return out of those. It wasn't, it was a quid pro quo, and this now is the model of Verizon's licensing for the past couple of years. And into the next indefinite future, however long that's going to be. Just a quick review of the license, uh, four percent gross annual revenues, uh, accelerated clause up to five. Um, Kathy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars operating funds a year. It goes up to five percent. It'd be somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the capital will be uh twenty three thousand dollars a year over five years, total a hundred and fifteen, but it'll be paid in in upfront. Um, chunks, one in uh on the ninetieth day after the license is signed. One, one year after it's signed, and another three years after it's signed. So all the capital will be in our hands before. Uh, Verizon has a right to exercise unilateral termination. Um, a lot of the other things are standard, but things I like to see, gross annual revenues, the definition has in it home shopping. And uh advertising, so that when those are included in gross annual revenues, they tend to increase the amount of money you get by about point five percent. So a little bit more there because of that definition. Excuse me, we like to see that. Uh, Verizon, one of the things Verizon does a lot better than anyone else is they will give you an HD channel. Uh, within uh uh two hundred and seventy days, um, uh, nine months. Uh, with Comcast, it's three years. With Charter, you don't get one. So one of the good things is we will get an HD channel. We'll get it within uh uh two hundred and seventy days. And unlike Comcast, for example, that makes you trade in an SD channel, we'll end up with four access channels, three SD and one HD channel. And uh, the town can devote that HD channel to whatever they want. Most communities like to put it on the government channel so that you can have budgets and pie charts and things like that in the highest definition, so folks can see it and read it. But it's entirely up to the town what you want to do with that HD channel, but that's that's uh considerable progress. Um, a lot of the other things are fairly standard. Uh, the insurance is the standard, six million, one million. Uh, the bond is fifty thousand. Um, uh, John pointed out to me and I noted it too when I was uh in the uh waiting room that the the sample bond they have here is that Exhibit B says twenty five thousand. But that's just a, that's just purely for format. It's not the actual bond we'll have. The bond is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our enforcement powers are to either threaten to terminate, which with Verizon may not be that big a threat. Uh, or to make a claim on the bond. So for example, if uh we have uh. Uh, if if we believe that Verizon is in breach of the license, we go through a standard. Uh, notification period, public hearing findings, and then if Verizon doesn't correct itself, we make a claim upon the bond. That's the enforcement mechanism we have in this case. Um, I'm going to end it there. Um, I will reiterate what John has said, and that is that we don't have any power to regulate rates. We don't have any power to regulate programming. We don't have any power to require technology. All of those are supposed to be handled by the market. And my opinion is, quite frankly, that it's with, at least with respect to improvements in technology, the market does do that and competition does do that. Um, I'll turn it now over to you, Mr. Chair, and any members of the board of the public that would like to ask questions.
Thank you very much, Bill. Um, Kathy, I'd love to get your uh your input as to um, uh, your your take and whether you'd like to see us go ahead with this from your perspective.
Um, there's a couple of things that we didn't bring up that are really a part of the contract, even though it's usually just boilerplate stuff. But I wanted to comment about a couple of things with Verizon. Their contract compliance is excellent. Um, working with them, they are. Our checks come on time. Um, they correct things when it's necessary. Um, so their compliance is excellent. So that's, that's a big thing that's part of this contract. That we're working with this person who goes to everybody's homes and everything else. So that's important. Um, their tech support and response times are excellent. As a consumer of Verizon, um, in my home. Um, their response and their equipment replacement, et cetera, are always but have always been excellent. Um, when we call them because our station's down or there's an issue with them. Um, we get an immediate callback. I can call twenty four seven and they have people at my door the next day. Um, so in that sense, I'm 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 pleased working with them. Um, customer service complaints and issues are minimal. As I told John earlier, we're, we might get one or two a year. Um, which I think is excellent. Um, it means that there, if someone calls and says they're having a problem. And it could be things like billings or phones and things like that, but since things are packaged together. We are kind of a part of it and the town has right of ways for this company. So we do follow up if people are frustrated and have problems with them. And I'm happy to say that even if it's a complex issue that involves, you know, some complexity and different companies. Um, Verizon has been very cooperative working with me. And um, working with the customers and following up to let me know what the status is. And so those are things that are part of the contract um that we don't usually talk about. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that as. I'm very pleased as a company and somebody that we have to work with. Um, frequently that they've been doing their job and fulfilling the obligations of their contracts. So that's, that's a critical issue for renegotiating a new contract and and for allowing a new contract with the company. Um, so I have no issues whatsoever with that. Um, the last four quarters, we've actually gone up slightly, but I think it's COVID. I think people are watching their channels and keeping their packages there. They don't want to get rid of any of them. Um, so there's one good blessing with COVID. Um, I think the way it's packaged keeps people with their cable con, keeps the television portion into their packages. Um, Charter and Verizon both have good packages. Um, so I'm pleased that that I think keeps our customers. The other thing that's helping is other packages are going up, Hulu, other, other companies, Apple. All of these are all going up in price. Um, so we've actually brought back a few customers for Charter and Verizon. Um, at the time that people are cutting the cord. There's legislation coming up that may help us in the future, including some of the um. Uh, legislation to get some of the over the top um monies. Coming back to the town, a portion to the state, a portion to the town and a portion to the cable. Um, our public access facilities to help provide. It won't be much, but um, I I like that it's moving forward. And it seems to be that it may move forward as federal and state legislation moving forward regarding that. So um, in general, obviously, we all wish we had more numbers. Um, we're negotiating with Charter as soon as we possibly can, and we will pretty much demand Charter go to five percent of gross. Which will make Verizon's clause go up to a five percent as well. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise I'm okay with the contract.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Members of the board, any questions? Oh, Scott Rogers, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. And and this might be not necessarily specific to the renewal, but maybe Kathy might be the one to to answer. But with that capital money, is, are there things that that you've earmarked? What would, what would be done with that capital?
Usually what happens is we save up the capital and make a large expenditure like. A new server, which are very expensive. We're talking a hundred thousand dollars. You know what I mean? So so those sort of things. We try to save the capital money for larger expenditures because we. Um, utilize operating for updates and cameras and things like that, small expenditures. Um, we do have to replace large servers that are sending the signals out and um, we try and save that for that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other members of the board have questions? Jason?
Uh, yeah, I think this is answered in a uh communication that was forwarded to us, but I'll just for for the benefit. Um, Exhibit A that goes with this uh lists the public buildings that are to be wired or supported by the Verizon service. And those are our current public buildings at their current street addresses. Uh, in the near future, one hopes uh will be uh. Potentially uh have a new address for the fire station and then there's potentially some question about uh where Town Hall is going to be located in future years. And the question I had was uh, um, what provision is there or is there a provision to. Migrate the service from one location to another during the term of the existing license? And Mr. Hewig, I think you answered that, but if you could here, uh, uh, just clarify that.
Certainly, uh, the, there isn't anything in the actual license that obligates this, but the state statute does. And it says that the cable operator must supply um free basic service and uh. Um, a free connection uh for all public buildings. Uh, and so what usually happens is, for example, if we close down a school, move it, open up another school. If we move Town Hall from one building to another, a fire station, so on, you simply let the cable operator know. And uh, they'll disconnect the old building and connect it into the new building. As long as the new building isn't twenty five miles out away from, you know, their plant. And Verizon, because it was a telephone company before it was a cable company, has got its wires everywhere. So it, whatever new buildings you're going to be moving into, uh, Verizon will cover that. Now, I, there's a caveat, and and the caveat is that right now Verizon, it's is in limbo. About whether they are going to continue to provide this service or not. Uh, and the the basis of that is that there was a legal challenge filed to a uh, an FCC order and decision in twenty nineteen. Which said basically that cable companies are allowed to pass through the costs of in-kind contributions and add it. To the total amount of support and it's capped at five percent. Uh, that was immediately challenged in courts, but cable companies took the position. That the provision of those free services, the free basic service to public buildings and the free connection. Was an in-kind contribution and that cost could be added in to the total cost, which is capped at five percent. Uh, that, uh, there were, a number of lawsuits were filed all over the country and they were gathered together in one uh, in one particular federal jurisdiction. Uh, the uh, the court decided, handed out a mixed judgment, but essentially upheld. The part of the uh twenty nineteen FCC order that said cable companies can pass through in-kind contributions. Um, I do not believe that decision was handed out about a year ago. I don't believe that's been challenged. I have not seen that it's been, that any appeal has been filed at the Supreme Court. I talked to John Harrington today and I said, John, what are you going to do about these? Are you going to provide the service or not? And he said, we don't know. We think it's still under appeal. And I said, all right, well, you tell me where you think it's under appeal, when it was appealed, it'd be appealed to the Supreme Court. Um, and let us know. So I'm waiting to hear from him. But I would, I would add the caveat that it is very possible Verizon will pull the plug on these and no longer provide free services. Now, what other companies have done is they'll say, look, we understand. It's really not that big an expense. Um, well, you know, we'll just bill you, okay? We'll bill you thirty bucks a month or something per building. And a minor amount for the connection. We know you want it, you know, if you want it, if you need it, we'll be happy to accommodate you. And I think Verizon would end up doing that here too. Anyway, that's the status of of uh free public uh service and the free drops. That's Exhibit A.
Thank you.
An ever evolving field, as you can get the sense of. Uh, to the chair, if I may, just one other comment. I just want to remind folks that, uh, you know, we're talking about. I just want to remind folks that, you know, we're talking about what we're getting in exchange, the revenues that we're getting from this contract. I just want to be clear that in the case of what we get for the gross annual revenues as well as the capital, these are business expenses that Verizon and Charter, through their license, pass through to everybody who buys the service. So, you know, if you look at your cable bill, I looked at mine before I came in tonight, and it was five dollars and ninety-one cents were the peg access fees that I'm paying to support my local peg access. So as always, if people may comment about what we're getting or not getting, just keep in mind, whatever we negotiate and we get through this contract, ultimately, it gets passed through to the residents. So we're always, and the board's always been cognizant of this, and striking a good balance of making sure that we have sufficient revenues to support our local access, but being cognizant of the fact that, you know, it is a pass-through fee that is going to wind up being paid by the residents and the subscribers. So it's always that, there's always that balance. I wouldn't want anybody to listen to this discussion and think that, you know, this money is somehow, you know, free money. Somebody's going to, as the classic economics, you know, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Well, there's no such thing as free peg access. We're paying, you know, you're going to pay for that as a subscriber. But it is, again, this is reasonable, we're trying to maintain, and we're also being cognizant as we, we're moving from what is currently a four percent to five percent of gross annual revenue, in part to try to compensate for the fact that we do see people cutting the cord, and that revenue is, is being less, has been less stable. So hopefully, some of the legislation, either at the state or the federal level, will shore up, you know, how peg access gets funded and, and make that a little bit more reliable as, as the technology improves and the streaming services become, you know, potentially more dominant. So, you know, we'll just stay tuned. It's why we're looking at five-year contracts. And I think the first cable contract I did was a twenty-year contract, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Thanks, John. Kathy?
Um, yeah, just one comment about that. We are keenly aware that the customer is paying for our service, and that's why we try to give them the best bang for their buck, and expanding it to as much possible ease of service for video on demand or TV station. We also need to be aware that there are people in our community who are not comfortable on YouTube, who do not have high-speed internet. And we are providing a service for those people in their homes to be able to turn on their church service on Sunday morning, to be able to watch a selectance meeting on their TV, to be able to watch a sports event as a family in front of their television sets. So we're keenly aware that people are paying for this, just like you pay for HBO, just like, so we try and provide as professional level as we possibly can and give them the bang for their bucks for our community information. We hope that we provide that.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathy. Members of the board, any other questions? I'll add that I think, as many people know, cable access and these such things are very near and dear to my heart. I've been involved with, with these things for many, many, many years. Bill and I worked on a license together in my old town, a charter license, it must have been twenty-two, twenty-three years ago, something like that. Neither of us have aged a bit. And Verizon is, is an interesting animal from a cable point of view. They pushed very, very hard a number of years ago for statewide licenses. I was one of many people that testified in Boston against that, and very glad that didn't happen because that would have cost local control to a great extent. So even though the template of the license is very, very similar, there are a number of things that are in there that, that we were able to negotiate successfully to, to our advantage that we would, we wouldn't even have this discussion. It would be a discussion between Verizon and somebody at the state who would see what made sense for the state, not for the individual municipalities. The other thing I want to add is, one way that I'm looking at the hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar capital of this is, in some ways, this is kind of an eight-year license because our old license expired three years ago. And for one reason or another, I don't want to get into it, it took a little while to get things up and running again. During that three-year interim, we received nothing for capital from either Verizon or from Charter, whose license was on the same expiration date. So that's, that's one way that I'm looking at this, that it's not particularly generous. It's just that Verizon, for a few years, didn't have to pay us anything for capital. They were continuing to pay us for the operating. But I, I am very appreciative of Bill Hewig and, and John and Kathy for bringing this forward to us. And if there are no other questions from the board or other commentary, I'll see if anyone from the public has any, any questions or comments before we wrap this one up. If you are, you can raise your hand or press nine on your phone, and I'll bring you in. Thus far, nothing. Going once. Going twice, gone, all right. Unless anybody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion on the license.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote in its statutory capacity as the Cable Television License Issuing Authority to approve and execute the proposed Verizon New England Incorporated Cable Television Renewal License as negotiated by Representatives of the Town and Verizon to be effective July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, was that Scott, was that you who seconded?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Julianne, how do you vote?
I.
Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Scott?
I.
Mitch Cole and I vote I, vote is unanimously approved. Attorney, very nice seeing you again, and thank you very much for your assistance. One last question, how soon do you think we'll be talking about Charter?
I just spoke with them today. I, I sent them an email telling them what we're looking for. My hope is that we can get that license in place in August, early September. That's ambitious, but I'm going to push for it. And I'll, I'll keep you informed through Mr., Mr., through the administrator, Mr. Coder.
Sounds great.
All right.
Good, good luck, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. John, I'll send a follow-up email tomorrow. All right, good evening, everyone, thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we, next we have reports.
Chair? I'm sorry, I just had a question. For the license renewal, that's going to require our signatures, so I'm just wondering what the timing of that would be.
Yeah, we'll have the, we have the documents, so we'll send something out for you to the board to come in and sign that. We also have notification requirements to the state that need to be fulfilled as well. So, so we'll have those documents for your signature this week.
Thank you.
We're good. Reports, looking at my screen, Scott, you go first.
Great, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to, as always, thank Chief Labor, Chief Parenti for their monthly reports. In terms of liaison to the ZBA, watched the interviews for ZBA candidates on June twenty-eighth as well as the ZBA meeting on the twenty-eighth, which focused a lot on variances for signs, sign sizes and shop sway and your crossing. Then on, just recently, Appropriations Committee met. They reviewed the same year-end transfers that we reviewed in our meeting last time, and as well as gotten an update on state aid from our finance director. And then finally, just thanks for the memo alerting us to the new staff. So just want to take an opportunity to welcome aboard. Some of the folks have been here for a little bit, but it's great to see them all recognized at the same time. So Ali Gardell, new police dispatcher, Kendra Faldetta, her new senior center director, Vinnie McNally, our conservation agent, Michael Seeger, new health agent, and Ross Erickson as a DPW equipment operator. Just thanks to all of them for choosing Northboro and now welcome aboard. That ends my report.
Thank you, Scott. Julianne?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm liaison to White Cliffs and Master Plan Implementation Committee, and White Cliffs will be meeting this Wednesday, MPIC will be meeting on Thursday. So I'll have an up-to-date report at our next meeting. And I just want to say, I would highly encourage people individually or as part of a committee or group to keep giving us ARPA ideas because we'll have to spend that money. So that ends my report.
Thanks, Julianne. Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very brief report, once again, I just want to echo Scott's acknowledgement of the new town staff hiring. It's great to see people coming to those positions, and we look forward to the work they'll be doing. And I also want to thank, as other people typically do, I'll fill in that gap, Chief Liver and Chief Parenti for their monthly police and fire reports to give us that information, keep us apprised of what's going on in our public safety arenas. So with that, my report is ended, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. The only thing that, that I wanted to add is for the Community Affairs Committee, they had a great concert Thursday night, a band called Stomp and Holler at Ellsworth McAfee Park. Their next concert is Sunday, the twenty-fourth at five PM, band called Cold Chocolate. They will have Easy Street Tacos, Northborough House of Pizza, Yummy Mummy, and Yilmun's Ice Cream. And I wanted to make sure that I thank the Recreation Department for use of their cornhole equipment at the, the concerts, which I can attest to are very well-used. And I also want to thank staff and particularly Becca for the, keeping us abreast of new staff hires. I, I think that's, that's really important, it's great to see who we're bringing on a little bit about them. I think that's, that's good for the community as well. And that ends my report. I believe we have, John, did you have anything else?
Yeah, just one brief update. Last night, Sunday, the seventeenth, the State Budget Conference Committee actually released their compromise bill. So apparently, legislature's working through the weekend. Wouldn't have to do that if they got their work done on time earlier, but I'll, I'll digress on that comment. But essentially, so now it's, it's, it's gone to the governor, and the governor will have ten days to basically approve the spending, and then, then it will back, the legislature will then determine whether or not, you know, if there's any vetoes, whether or not to try to vote to override that. But basically, what will happen is the state budget needs to be done before their formal session ends on July thirty-first. So we should hopefully have a final state budget by, you know, by the end of this month, in which case we'll give you an update on where things finally shake out. I think I've kept you updated all along, but, so the unrestricted general government aid numbers have gone up a little bit, pushing more like five percent, and some of the minimum school aid numbers from thirty per student going sixty. So there will be some, some benefit, nothing, not so earth-shattering that we'd call a special town beating to, you know, spend that limited increase in money. As you all know, when state aid does come in above what our revenue estimates are, when we go to set the tax rate in November, essentially, the only thing it can be used for is to reduce the tax impact. So it will have a, that's the effect that, you know, the small additional amount of money will have will be to reduce that, you know, significant increase that we were forecasting for fiscal twenty-twenty-three later this fall. So, but we'll get you some final numbers when they, when they come in for us and give you an update on that shortly. That's it.
Thank you, John. We have a cemetery deed. Someone like to make a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed one-one-five-one.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by, by Jason. I think, Scott, you tried to do it, but you were muted.
Missed that mute, bud.
I almost missed it myself, so.
So we know, no discussion. Scott, how do you vote?
I.
Jason?
I.
Julianne?
I.
I also vote I, vote unanimously in favor. We have no further items other than one last opportunity for public comment, if anyone in the audience wants to, to ask or say anything before we wrap it up. Going once, going twice, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Subsection Three, Collective Bargaining Strategy Planning, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott, any discussion? Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Julianne?
I.
Scott?
I.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous. Public session is ended at eight forty-five PM.